...town council Tuesday, February the 19th, 2019 at 9:00 AM in council chambers. And welcome to everyone here and Counselor Rhodes who is on the phone with us. The first off is the introduction of late items. Is there anything? No, thank you. Then could we have a motion please to adopt the committee of the whole agenda? Thank you, Counselor.
Oh, make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Rhodes. Counselor King, Counselor Rhodes, all in favor. Thank you.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. And we have a couple of delegations this morning. And the first is the Asoias Desert Center. And we have a presentation from Denise Eslick. Thank you Denise. And she sent us a PowerPoint.
Yep.
Right, okay, thank you.
First of all, thank you very much. The Desert Society always really appreciates being able to present every year and fill you in on our activities over the past year and some of the activities we'll be doing in the coming year, as well as our partnership with the town. And because there are some new counselors and some new faces here, I did want to just very quickly give a brief overview of the Desert Society. The society was formed in 1991, so we're almost 30 years old now. And it was founded by community members here in Asoias as a nonprofit society. And in 1998, the society secured 67 acres of endangered habitat, and that's the site of the Asoias Desert Center. And there were two huge motivating factors behind the formation of the Desert Society. And the first obviously is the environment. The habitat at the Desert Center and around this area is called the antelope-rush ecosystem. And it is one of the most endangered habitats in the entire country. It is also one of the rarest habitats in the entire country. So there's a number of reasons why it's so important from a conservation standpoint. One is that this region has an incredible diversity of species, so a wide variety of plants and animals. It also has species found nowhere else in Canada. And the little snake that you see on your left-hand side, that's a desert night snake. It is the rarest snake in Canada. It's only found in this region. And scientists didn't even know it existed until the 1980s. So it's that unique, that special. And then this region also has one of the highest concentrations of threatened and endangered species in the country. And you'll see the burrowing owl bear, and that's one of the endangered species here that people really love. But there was a really big second motivating factor behind the formation of the Desert Society, and that was to benefit the community. And that was the driving force behind opening the Asoias Desert Center. It wanted to create a nature education facility that not only provided education about the environment, but also promoted Asoias and attracted tourists, provided jobs and volunteer opportunities, and like I said, provided education, activities, and then also conserved the desert habitat around here that makes Asoias so special. So again, the vision of the society was to help the environment and serve the community. And hopefully by over the activities of last year and coming up, it'll show the connection, how tightly connected environment and community are. A lot of times there's a disconnect between people and environment, and they're not seen as really tightly linked. And sadly, sometimes they're seen as mutually exclusive. You're choosing to help the environment, and you're choosing to help people. And nothing would be further from the truth. They're so interconnected. The other thing that's extraordinarily interconnected is the Desert Society and our local community. We do what we do for the community, but also our efforts would absolutely not be possible were not for the support of the community. They're the ones who make everything we do possible. So one of the big focuses, obviously, of our efforts is the Desert Center. In addition to restoring and conserving 67 acres of endangered habitat at the Desert Center, we welcome thousands and thousands of visitors every year. Our 2018 attendance was really solid despite a plague of different events. We had floods and fires, as everybody knows, and then we also were faced with a late opening due to some maintenance issues at the Desert Center. But despite that, we've had a really strong attendance for 2018. It was only down a bit. And Desert Center clearly demonstrates the impact of people, not only in the fact that we welcome thousands of visitors from around the world, but also it's the people that make our efforts possible. We have about 50 to 60 volunteers who assist us throughout the year. And then we also do have seasonal tour guides, a part-time education coordinator, and a part-time restoration coordinator, as well as an executive director. Although the Desert Center is a lot of our effort, we are a year-round organization. So we are very busy in the winter, and one of the things that keeps us busy in the winter is our annual lecture series. In 2018, we did a four-part winter lecture series, and we actually had our best attendance ever. And then we've got another lineup for this year, 2019, and we started off with a good start. We had 93 people at our presentation on Saturday, which was our first program. Our second program is this coming Saturday. So we're looking forward to another great year. We also do presentations and outreach in the community upon request. In terms of events, we do a number of annual events. One of the ones that we do every year is our annual night tours. And then in 2019, we're looking forward to doing hopefully a bluebird nest box activity workshop, as well as a summer fundraiser. So those are a couple of things looking ahead. And then we also like to support other events in the community hosted by other organizations. We've been part of the art groups. They do an annual event. The artists get together and do an annual event, and we've supported that for the last several years. And hopefully we'll be doing that again this year. And then we also support the efforts of other conservation groups, like the rehab center, the Raptor Rehab Center Charco, as well as the Metal Art Festival. And this year's metal art program is going to be at the Sonora Center. So we're looking forward to hosting a program at the Sonora Center for metal art. And then we also provide free school tours to the community. So local schools have the opportunity to come to the Desert Center and get a free school tour. We're able to accommodate about 200 students a year. And then we also, obviously, will do school groups from other areas, as well as post-secondary groups. One of the things that we can offer post-secondary students and institutions is an opportunity to do research at the Desert Center. So remember, there have been a number of research projects done over the years at the Desert Center, and then the Desert Society will do its own research projects as well. We also keep pretty thorough records on species data at the Desert Center, which in light of climate change could become increasingly important, that data. So we do record sightings, we record bluebird statistics, and we have game cameras. That is one of the photos from our game cameras. Because a lot of the animals here are nocturnal, so it's good to have those cameras up so we can see what's going on at night. Native landscaping is a big part of what we do as well. We have a demonstration garden at the Desert Center that we maintain, and it's a teaching tool for visitors. And then obviously just maintaining the site, planting and pruning, and providing the resources and expertise to the community. Habitat restoration also is a big part of what we do at the Desert Center. Again, that's thanks to the volunteers that help us out. We do weekly restoration work parties and have a group of volunteers that come in huge help. We do seed collection and do provide native seeds to the local community. And we also control invasive weeds on the site. We don't do that alone. We have a lot of help from volunteers. We also have been helped by the stewardship society. And by that little bug that you see in the left-hand corner there, that is a beetle, and it's actually a biocontrol agent that is intentionally released. And it controls the plant on the right, Dalmatian toad flecks. It eats the shoots and stems of the plant, and that limits the seed production. It doesn't entirely kill the plant, but it'll limit the seed production. And Dalmatian toad flecks is a really bad invasive. It can produce half a million seeds. So having a little bug on hand to help us out is a huge advantage. And then the Desert Center also provides breeding sites for threatened and endangered species. We have bluebird nest boxes, habitat for the bears hair streaked butterfly, which is an endangered butterfly in this area. And we have two state foot breeding ponds, and it's also a not-risk amphibian in this area. And then we were also very busy this past year doing boardwalk upgrades. And thanks to the Asoias Credit Union, we were able to address some accessibility and some safety issues out on the boardwalk. The Asoias Credit Union provided funding. So that's one of our new accessibility rounds in the picture. And then we were also able to add some new interpretive signage, and that was thanks to the community foundation. And two other ones I neglected to recognize. Watermark is wonderful about hosting our winter lectures, so I just wanted to recognize them. And then Ford Specie has been funding our free school programs for 10 years, and so I do want to recognize Ford Specie as well. Building maintenance was a huge, huge focus last year. We unfortunately had damage to our interpretive trailer over the late winter and early spring due to a number of roof leaks. It kind of wiped out our flooring and did a tremendous amount of stealing damage. And so the first few weeks of the season were spent repairing. And you can see it was a very big job. That is one of our dedicated board members doing the repairs, and it is truly thanks to the efforts of the board and all the work that they put in, plus donations from local businesses in town, that we were able to get the repairs done in such a speedy fashion. And the Desert Center only suffered about a three-week delay, which considering how extensive the repairs were, was pretty good. But again, our board members were tremendous. And last year we were busy repairing the building. This year we're going to be busy with a new building. So we've got a new 12-by-60 modular building on order. It should be delivered by mid-April. And then there will be several weeks getting all the finishing touches done. In addition to the new building, it's giving us an opportunity to build a new entrance and access ramp, which will be more accessible, so we're really happy about that. Also to revamp some exhibits and displays, so that'll be a new educational impact. And also to do some additional native landscaping. So the new building is also making some other projects possible, which is great. And the town was absolutely fundamental in making the new building possible. They provided the initial seed money. If it hadn't been for the town and their $40,000 to get the ball rolling, all the other donations that come in wouldn't have been possible. So where we are right now, we have raised $110,000, approximately $110,000 of our $120,000 goal, so we're almost there. And again, thanks to the town of Asoias for getting the ball rolling. We've also gotten great support from the credit union, Asoias Credit Union, Regional District, Community Foundation, Burrowing Owl Linery, Problems of B.C., TELSS Community Ambassadors, Okanagan, and then individual donors that can't stand up above them have been incredibly supportive. And again, that speaks to the wonderful participation and support of the community. In addition to the town's funding, which made the new building possible, the town also provides us with funding every year to help us pay for core expenses. Some projects that we do, we can get project funding for. Getting funding for core expenses is virtually impossible. So the town's annual funding to the society is incredibly important, and it makes a big difference in what we're able to accomplish each year. And we certainly still have a lot to accomplish in the years ahead. So as always, the town's continued funding is incredibly important, as is the role of the community. We know we're able to do what we can, again, because of the community and in particular volunteers. The society depends on our volunteers. This year, volunteers are important every year, but this year with a new building and all our projects under way, they're particularly important. And I'd like to take this opportunity to say if anybody is interested in being a volunteer, we're always looking for volunteers. So again, the town's support incredibly important to us. It enables us to contribute to the community and serve the community in terms of the environment, contribute to the local economy, the social well-being of the community. It also helps us make that really important connection between people and the environment, and it kind of addresses that disconnect, so people see how closely those two things are interconnected, which is why I included that picture. One of our former guides with a lovely praying mantis on her hat, and that kind of really speaks to how tightly everything here is connected. So again, thank you for your support and for everything, all the ways you've helped out the Desert Society. We greatly appreciate it. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask now, or there's our contact information.
Thank you very much Denise. It's always interesting to hear from you about the latest upgrades and what's going on. It amazes me that you have that many people not only involved as volunteers, but attending events and school groups. I do remember bringing my class, it was some time back, but I think I brought a couple of classes there myself, so I really appreciate it. I have one question. I'm assuming because you're not getting the new building for a while, number one, you may have a late opening because you're going to have to transfer everything?
Yeah, we're hoping that again, we'll be somewhere in the realm of last year, where we do people late open, maybe two to three weeks late, because the building's supposed to come about mid-April.
Yeah.
And then we'll have to build the deck and entrance and all those things afterwards. So hopefully it won't be more than a couple, two to three weeks late.
And have you, I know you were looking at trying to get rid of the old trailers. Has that happened or not?
One of our board members put it on Facebook, and I think he had his first contact within 10 minutes.
Oh.
Not only do we have someone lined up, but we have some names on the lead list.
So you have, you've stored all the things from that old trailer somewhere so that you can move them?
We will be doing that early March.
Good.
We're kind of waiting for this note to go down.
Yeah, good idea.
And then we'll get some storage units coming on site, and we'll get the building active.
Good, thank you. Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks Denise for the great presentation and the update and the work you do to support the environment. My one question is, is the bluebird unique to this area?
Not at all, not, sorry about the bad impression.
No, you didn't. I just had to ask.
No, not unique to this area. But what started a number of decades ago, was in the 1970s, the population of bluebirds started plummeting. And so an initiative actually started North America-wide to install nest boxes. So it was out throughout the United States and Canada. And the Desert Center site was actually one of the first sites in the transcontinental bluebird trail. So we're part of the transcontinental bluebird trail, and we're, like I said, early on, one of the initial sites. And then there have been thousands, I want to say it's around 3,000 nest boxes installed just in B.C. by the Southern Interior Bluebird Trail Society. So no, those aren't exclusive to this area.
Beautiful, we get them at our house all the time, more likely from your center.
Yes, we're hoping to do, like I said, we're hoping to do a workshop this year, summer.
Good, thank you. Is there anyone else that has any questions? Yes, Mr. Maykel.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just a couple, first of all, comment, the funding, you know, came from the Resort Municipality Initiative, and thanks for the update on that project. We will be having to make up a plaque that hopefully you can find someplace that acknowledges the contribution of the Resort Municipality funding, so I'll be in contact with you very, very shortly on that.
Yeah.
The second thing is, I'm curious to know if the National Park people have made any connection, speaking of connections, have they made any connection with the Desert Society over the years relative to the work that you've been doing?
Yeah, the connection has kind of been ongoing from the start of that process, the Desert Society has been in connection. And that's one thing I would like to have Sarah Boyle come present at one of our board meetings and update us. We are looking for ways to, one of our goals in the years ahead is to get permanent protection for the site. Right now, the Desert Center site is a lease for the crown. We do have a 30-year lease, but it expires in 2041. So it's not permanent protection. Certainly being included within the park footprint would provide permanent protection. And so, you know, that is something that we'd like to discuss.
Interesting.
Discuss further. But that will be one of, in the terms of looking ahead, that will be one of the top priorities in the years ahead, is to get permanent protection for the site.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you very much Denise. It's always interesting to have you come and tell us about things. And I have to say, I attended the event on Saturday at Watermark. It was fabulous. It was so interesting about the bird brains was the topic on the, and about how, like some of these birds are so good at problem solving, it's phenomenal. It's like they have a brain the size of, you know, of a human, and yet I believe the brain of the hummingbird is like a grain of rice, isn't it? Isn't it? Did she not say that?
Size-wise, and then percentage to body weight, it's large.
Yes, and there was an expert there on hummingbirds and banding them, and she was amazing too. So thank you very much. Those are very...
Did anybody take banding hummingbirds on?
Yeah.
They're tiny.
You can hardly even see the little band that they put on. Oh, it was fascinating. Anyway, thank you for putting those on. They're always interesting.
We appreciate being here, thanks.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. So our next presentation is, and I want to get the name right, is it Tracy Wong?
Correct.
Tracy, and I'm sorry, I had the wrong name down here. So she is the Deputy Assessor for B.C. Assessment Authority, and thank you very much for coming. I believe Counselor King was interested in this and asked if we could have this on the agenda. So welcome, and please go ahead.
Great, well, thank you very much for the invitation. I always enjoy coming to communities within the Okanagan region. I just wanted to thank also the presentation, because not only does the previous presentation of the society benefit this community, it benefits the whole valley. I brought my son back to enjoy that as well. So now I'll carry on with my own presentation.
Sure.
And so I'm hoping to give you a little bit of an education and overview about B.C. Assessment and your own role and how you fit into the big picture. So I will start with some of the things that I'll be talking about.
Got to make it a little smaller. You got it at 100%. Good.
Okay, so today I'm going to talk a little bit about how we value property, how we classify property, what our cycle is, and the key dates around our cycle, the relationship between the assessment taxes, a little bit of an overview of the role here for the town of Asoias, our appeal process, and how we like to collaborate with local government. So who we are. So when we started back in 1974, previous to that, taxes were actually done by municipalities. So they at that time felt that they wanted to have some independence, so we became an independent crown corporation. So taxing function therefore became independent of provincial politics, and it was either operated by the municipality or the province. So gave us some impartiality. So our product is we produce an annual list of properties. They identify the owners, we value the properties, we classify them, we apply exemptions based on legislation, and there's over $8 billion is raised annually for local services provincially. So how we value property. We use for almost all of our properties, but there are some exceptions. But generally, we use what we call market value. Why we use market value is that it's a fair way of applying valuation. It's the fairest system for distributing property tax burden, because properties with similar values will pay similar taxes. It's easy to confirm. In fact, people can go online to our public website and look at their assessment classification. They can also look at their neighbors and any other properties throughout the province. So what does it mean to you? Well, values will fluctuate annually based on what's happening in the market. So we choose one day of the year, July the 1st, to have a uniform valuation date. So the big picture is basically taxes are distributed fairly. So we have nine classifications of property, and this allows a variable tax rate system, which I'm sure you are somewhat familiar with, as you create the mill rates and the tax rates. And we also gives us the ability to apply partial or complete exemptions depending on the classification of the property. And we use many different legislation, pieces of legislation to help guide us in this regard. Our main piece of legislation is the Assessment Act and the Assessment Authority Act, but we also look to the community's charter, Local Government Taxation, Rural Act, and School Act, among many others. So the relationship between assessment and taxation. So as I mentioned, we function independently from any of the taxing authorities, but we don't set the tax rates. That's your job here. So an individual's property assessment will determine their share of the taxes that they pay to support all the services that we rely. So our function is to ensure that the tax burden is distributed equitably among similarly So there is a common misconception that if your assessment goes up significantly, that your taxes are going to go up at the same rate. And we've really seen a lot of tremendous growth in assessments over the last five to 10 years. This year it started to stabilize, and we didn't see quite the same increases. However, the taxes, we didn't see the taxes going up, you know, 10%, 15% to correlate with those increases in assessment. So this is one of the messages we really try to get out to our customers. In fact, what I often tell our customers is if the assessments grow up, it doesn't mean your taxes are going to drop. And that's usually when we start to get that message. What's really important is how your assessed values change relative to the average change in your community for similar properties. So really, you should be looking to your neighbors and seeing how their assessments have changed, and hopefully if yours are the same, your taxes probably will remain, you know, similar to what they were the previous year. Of course, depending on what you folks do in terms of wanting increases from year to year. So the graphic kind of illustrates that, however, we haven't taken into consideration any increases that you're going to apply from year to year. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the highlights of the 2019 assessment roll. So overall, provincially, we have over 2 million properties that we reassess each and every year. We're close to $2 trillion. And of that $2 trillion, we saw a growth of over 31 and a half... And of that $2 trillion, we saw a growth of over $31.5 billion just in new construction. So this is assessments that are being added to the role every year in terms of new developments, either in subdivisions or building, by law changes, so on and so forth. I might like to mention at that point, we're seeing this increase every year practically, especially through these high-growth years. We haven't changed our staffing size in decades. So we're having to learn how to do our jobs much more efficiently to keep the cost of assessments down and to provide the services to the taxpayers. So for Asureas, the number of folios really didn't change. When I looked up last year, I think you were at, well, 42.78, so we only added one folio. So there really was no increase in terms of the number of properties. However, we did see a value increase overall from the year before, about 8% on average. Your total role is 1.69 billion. And of that 1.69 billion, about 16.2 million was due to the new construction that came into your community. And the, what we call no-market change actually increased a little bit this year compared to last year. So we're really seeing some steady growth in your community as well, as we are throughout the Okanagan. We're attracting developers and people are wanting to move into our communities up and down the valley. So generally, property increases, we did see last year, but they weren't quite as tremendous as we've seen in the years past. But for a single-family residential, you know, between 5 and 15% on average. A single-family home was low, 8% generally. Stratos, which of course is an area of tremendous growth in many communities, and you're starting to see that here in Asureas. Either, you know, a little bit of a drop depending on what the development was, up to as high as 25%. So there's a lot more fluctuations and a lot of pretty fight. Commercial and industrial, same thing, kind of stable, but we did see, you know, a couple of drops in some property types as well as increases as well as 25%. I know Jim had mentioned to me that you were interested in how we value waterfront property. So I did add a slot in here about the Crown-owned foreshore in conjunction to upland properties that are privately owned. So we have embarked on a reassessment project over the last three, four years throughout the province and certainly throughout the valley. We've got a number of lakes that we all enjoy, and many of these lakes we own property, upland privately, and they like to be able to build their docks and enjoy the foreshore. So in some cases, they lease a waterlot from the Crown, and in some cases, they don't, and they still go ahead and build the dock. We don't, as B.C. Assessment, we don't care whether they have a legal lease or they just build the dock. If we become aware of the docks, then we will assess it as an occupier of Crown land. But we have to assess them separately. And the reason being is that there are two different ownership sets. So the upland would be Mr. and Mrs. Smith's name, they own that as a facemount property. And then the foreshore, the lake waterlot, would be actually owned by the Crown. And then we would put them on as a secondary owner if I was to gather they have a legal lease, so they're just occupying that. Because there's two separate ownership sets, we don't have the ability to put them on one assessment. I don't think as a property owner, you know, if I owned, I don't, but if I did own a foreshore, an upland property, I wouldn't want the Crown on my single-family home. And vice versa, you know, the Crown wants to be able to identify those properties and the SBC Assessment want to identify them for taxation purposes, so that they pay their share of taxes that they're liable for. So those are the reasons why we separate out those assessments. In some cases, we didn't do that previously, and so we really attempted over the last few years to correct those. So that brings me to the end of that question. I'm going to talk a little bit about the appeal process now, which we're kind of in the middle of at this time in our cycle. So we really sort of think about the new year, of course, is January, the whole month of January is our inquiry period. And so we open up our phone lines to taxpayers and to the public. You don't have to necessarily own a property to inquire about somebody else's assessment if you choose. So the whole month of January is to answer questions from taxpayers and property owners. And if we can satisfy those questions at that level, then they still have an opportunity to appeal their property or someone else's property. We have what we call a no-surprises policy. So we also, when we are making changes, we do reassessment projects, and sometimes that will end up in significant increases in certain sectors of our property database increasing. So we try and let owners know at any time before they get their assessment notices that there will be some significant change. So we often will send what we call early notification letters in December to alert them, as well as we put notices on their actual assessment notices of some of these changes. So their special messages are included. In some cases, with some of our larger commercial clients, we'll actually contact them in November when we're close to setting those rates and any assessments. And we'll have, we'll reach out to them to have dialogue to talk about the assessments. So, you know, they can provide us with more information, and sometimes that will help us. We may not have all the information at that time. So that's worked really well for us in creating relationships as well as making sure that we have a very accurate assessment role. The next third period is our inquiry period, pardon me, our part period. And we're right in the middle of that now, so that goes from the beginning of February to the middle of March. And that's when those folks that have actually filed appeals can now go ahead and start attending hearings. And they simply give their case to, it's an independent tribunal that's appointed by government. And we attend as B.C. Assessment. It's up to the panel to make the final decision, and whatever happens, kind of happens out of that process. We've made a few changes in how we do that process now. Traditionally, we had the hearings set in a number of different communities, which we still do. I believe that, you know, we have hearings here, and so I guess some of the outlying areas, the folks that have to come in to have their hearings met, as well as Corona for a bit and so on. Now, we've, the last two years, we've been starting to do more telephone hearings. So that's been really well received. Everybody is quite busy these days, including ourselves, trying to set the role and get the assessment notices out there. So it's been, it's been quite a good thing, and most people appreciate having that ability to settle them quite easily, actually just calling in for their hearing. But we still do hold, according to the number of people that are not hearing, so it's almost throughout the month of February and the middle of March. Generally, I'll get to the next slide. Our assessments are accepted, particularly the residential. You can see from this graph that over the last 10 years, less than 2%, 1.24% of all the folios are appealed. So that's pretty significant, that very few people question the assessments. And we take a lot of pride in that, that we feel that we're doing a very good job in evaluating and assessing properties. Commercial's a little bit higher, but of course, there's far less of those properties. Okay, so almost to my closing here, the other thing, we just like to reach out to our local government and communities. And we like to share information and work together with, and we often work, you know, have many meetings and have the opportunity to work with Jim quite often over the years. You know, we will reach out and we'll try and do aerial photography programs together. So we'll actually provide some, perhaps for you folks, if you're willing to get those aerial photography done for your own community's purposes, we'll collaborate, you know, that's just one example, it's something that we'll do. And we'll share costs with that. And then we'll also be privy to that information as well. You know, we do our best to provide information to your staff here in Asureas. A couple times a year, I'll provide a link and just give you an overview of the role, especially in conjunction with what's going on in your community in terms of appeals, because that can create some risk for your role. So I'll let them know what's outstanding and what we could potentially lose on your role, because that could mean you may have to bet some money back every year. And that just, you know, helps you in doing your job, so that there's a little bit of contingency kind of fun set aside so to cover some of those losses. As well as any changes in legislation that may be coming, you know, sort of down that will impact assessments. We really do try to work together. And lastly, we do have a lot of information available on our public website. I always welcome you to go there. As I mentioned, you can look at your own assessment, every assessment of anything throughout the province, as well as any other information that you might be interested in, you know, just to have more questions about, you know, podcast, for example. And then, you know, at this point, I'm going to close, and I will open the floor to questions.
Thank you very much, Tracy. That was very helpful to understanding a little bit more about this. I have a question, but I'm going to let Counselor Bennett ask first. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question, if I phone in for assessment, appeal, and if I come down and go before Board of Appeal, that's like two or three people? If I phone in, is it like one person, one-on-one, or is it three different people, or how?
It's still the full panel. There's a conference call during the week, so we'll be available. You can phone in from our office on the corner of the panels, and then the panel will call in from the corner of their offices. So we will have all the parties available, and that's all I can tell you.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, my question is concerning the Crown Foreshore. So I know that for the last couple of years, I live on the lake, on Asureas Lake, and I have received a, two assessment notices. And the first time that I got one, I did appeal it, so I know how to go through that process because I was assessed as having buildings and so on on my beach, which I did not. So I did appeal it. I have nothing down there, no dock, no buildings, nothing. However, it was, my assessment was reduced, but I still get a second notice. However, in talking to some of my neighbors and other people who live on the lake, not everybody is in the same boat. Not everybody gets an assessment at all. And so I asked at the, you know, at the front counter, I said, "How do we know who gets assessment?" Just ask them. Well, we have a map, and it shows the properties that do have the foreshores. And it's about 50% of the properties on the lake. I'm just wondering, why do I have with nothing on my property? And why do some properties not have anything? Is there, can you explain that, please?
Well, I guess my question to you first of all is, do you have a lease on the foreshore? Or no, it's in the government?
No.
Okay, then I will have to take that away.
This is your field.
Yeah, perhaps, perhaps.
So, well, I don't think I have a lease. I've never done anything specific.
I can look into that for you to see on our records if we show a lease, and I will do that. So that's the first thing I will do, is I'll just make a note of it.
Well, I better find out, there's lots of people in the same boat as me, so I think that I, we'd better find out what's the, yeah.
The other ones, which we, we can only do what we know. These are very difficult properties for us to identify. And like I said, we have projects where we've actually used air photography to identify them. These docks go up and down. Some folks haul them in off the beach, so, you know, they're there for a while and then they're not there. This is part of our challenge in getting them. If they don't have a lease, and this is why I asked you that, and they don't have any structures, we shouldn't be assessing them, and we don't. So that's why I want to go and look into your personal situation.
Because people on either side of me do have docks, and maybe, I think that was what the appeal process said, we may have in looking at the picture, assumed some of it was on your property, but it's not, so.
And if there are some that we're missing, then, you know, we'll endeavor to look into that and to have those on for next year. So I'll also make a note of that.
So it should be every property on a lake should be assessed with, and depending on how much they've got on the foreshore, depending on-
No, what it is, is every property that either has a lease with the Crown, so you can actually apply to the Crown to have a lease for a waterlot. And, you know, that's the proper way of doing it, so you build your dock, and you, because then you have permission to build that dock.
Well, I don't need a dock, and I don't have anything, so that's why it never occurred to me to have a lease. Yeah, okay, fair enough. Thanks.
So I think that's something, that's something that we'll put on the side, so we'll look into that.
Okay.
But many people don't know the process. It's not clear. And they just figure, "Oh, I bought my house here, or I bought my beach, now I bought a boat, I want a dock." They just build the dock.
Yes.
Those are the ones that are difficult, because we don't have any record of them.
Okay.
And so every year, every couple of years, we'll bring out the photos. And of course, the photos are only as good as how new they are.
Of course.
To identify them. So we will go back and we will have a look again. And, you know, and it is challenging, because we pretty much have to look every year. And then for those folks that all of a sudden, a big storm comes up, like we had a challenge last year. We had a few floods on some of the lakes, and people lost a lot of those improvements. So we actually reached out to them as much as we could, those that we had assessed and asked them, "Do you still have the dock?" So that would quickly move them if they were destroyed or if they have no intention of replacing them. So we kind of work it both ways, but it is, it's very challenging for us to get it.
Well, thank you very much. I just thought I needed to bring it up, because I know there's so many people in the same, well, some that are assessed and some aren't. So, you know, I wondered how they came up with that. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that has any questions about this? Ms. McKay, you're okay with this? Sorry, go ahead.
Do you know offhand how often they take pictures of houses on lakes? Or when the last time it was done?
I would have to go, like, every year we do, we have different rights done at different communities, so I can't really speak to the last time we have to be done. Yeah, it's not done every year.
I wouldn't think so. Too many lakes in the province, but I'm just, it must rotate, so it could be eight or 10 years since you've been here, theoretically.
I would hope it's, like, for our larger communities, I'm hoping that it's sooner than that, in our more open areas. I'm guessing it would be five years or so.
Okay.
I could certainly find out when the last year, if you can, for you.
Thank you. Counselor Harvey has a question.
So, yeah, I'm taxed federally based on my income, provincially based on my income, and municipally based on somebody's assessment of my property. Have you ever, has there ever been consideration of having municipal taxes be income-based as opposed to property value-based, which is an estimate, as opposed to an income, which is an actual?
Yeah, it's something that I don't think about, because it's not part of my mandate or my job.
Maybe push it up the food chain.
I might be out of a job if I do.
Okay, so now we, now we understand why it carries on then.
I think it's also, it is a very fair way of creating a land tax. And actually, B.C. Assessment has won a number of awards, that it is highly recognized. I think we're number two or number three in the world in terms of fairness. I think Hong Kong might have gotten ahead of us. But it's always based on the market value for property tax.
Well, it's an estimate of market value.
Yeah, well, it's an estimate, but, you know, based on our vast estimate of fair market value. I think it's a good estimate. Personally, I think it is. It's based on what you think you could sell your property for. Most people understand that, and that's another reason why it's easily explained to people. And, you know, many people, not everybody, but many people have some idea of what their property is worth. And if they don't, then they actually rely on our assessments quite often for other reasons than the purpose that we actually deliver them. Banks are using their mouth, you know, for mortgage purposes. Banks are using their mouth, you know, for mortgage purposes, because we really are quite good at our jobs, and we've gotten a lot better. And I expect, you know, as time goes on, we'll be getting better at how we assess jobs, or assess properties. There are some exceptions. You know, waterfront is more challenging, or rural properties are more challenging. You don't have as many sales to predict what the value is. But for things like strata, single-family homes, which is the bulk of our assessment of all, like those, more single-family homes, more as of 80% of our goal is residential, we have a plethora of sales that we really want to set the value of. But I think generally, our assessments are very accurate. There are exceptions, there are, you know, unique properties that are maybe not quite as accurate.
Well, thank you very much. We certainly appreciate you coming and taking the time to explain some of this for us, because it obviously can be confusing, yeah.
Very good. At any time, I'm always happy to come and speak with you. I'll leave some of my business cards here, so if you have any other questions, I just wanted to, please feel free to.
Thanks, Tracy.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Bye, ma'am.
Next, we have a report from our senior planner, Mr. MacArthur, on street food vendor selection and approval policy. Before you start, Mr. MacArthur, CJ, there's some feedback on the phone, and I'm just wondering, is there any way, there's some background noise that seems to be coming through, is there any way that we can-
It's actually the speaker's voice is coming back through.
Oh, is that what it is? Our speaker's voice cut. Sorry, CJ, it's not your fault. Okay, go ahead.
I can try it on the menu again, maybe that'll correct it.
No, no, it's the speaker's voice from here apparently going through the phone, so not to worry about it, we'll deal with it.
I did send you an email asking you to, if you could try something to see if it would help, so if you could check your email.
I sure will, yeah.
Okay.
I'll do that right now.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. MacArthur.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So this report is in respect to a revised street vendor, street food vendor selection and approval policy. The town receives inquiries about food vendor licenses on a regular basis. A review of the current street food vendor selection and approval policy has identified a policy would benefit from a refresh. The policy was developed after the Associated Business License bylaw was implemented. Staff proposed to revise the current policy to increase options for potential food vendor operators and streamline the application process. Updates to the policy are required to streamline the application process and also to bring it in alignment with the business license bylaw, as well as the Town Center Renewal Plan, which calls for an increase in vibrancy in downtown. The proposed changes include revising the quotas for each category of food vendor, replacing the expression of interest process with a staff-led process of evaluating food vendor applications, and revising the required vendor information to ensure necessary information is collected. Importantly, staff will propose that applicants be asked to propose food offerings which do not compete with the offerings of existing restaurants and food vendors. Policy bylaw and regulations, official community plan. The OCP emphasizes the importance of creating a diverse and vibrant downtown. One way to achieve diversity and vibrancy is to enable a variety of food options. In order to ensure a diversity of food offerings, a revised policy will request that applicants outline for staff how their proposed food offerings will complement and not compete with existing options. Business license bylaw. The business license bylaw sets out requirements for food vendors. The bylaw permits food vendors to operate on municipal or private land, subject to a series of provisions. Operators on municipal land must obtain a license of use agreement from council. Zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw stipulates off-street parking provisions. Any private properties with food vendors must still meet those parking requirements. Town Center Renewal Plan. The Town Center Renewal Plan emphasizes the importance of protecting existing businesses in downtown while enabling the establishment of complementary services. One of the strategies recommended by the Town Center Renewal Plan is to increase the number of food vendors in downtown as a means of increasing vibrancy in the area. Community feedback during the Town Center Renewal Plan process supported this recommendation. Rationale for recommendation. By revising the license quotas and locations available for potential food vendors, vendor operators, and streamlining the application process, staff expect more potential food vendors will follow through with an application after their initial inquiry. The Town Center Renewal Plan encourages an increase in the number of food options in downtown, which was supported by community feedback. Importantly, food vendors would complement the existing food options for residents and tourists, rather than replicating them. Implications. Residents and visitors will potentially have increased diversity of food options, which should also increase vibrancy in the downtown. Organizational staff will be required to review food vendor applications. Budget, there are no costs associated with this report. Significant dates. Staff will prepare a report for an updated policy and associated bylaw amendment for council consideration at a later date. And sustainability, a vibrant community will aid in the town's economic sustainability. Options. That one, that council directs staff to prepare an updated policy and bylaw amendment for council's consideration at a later date. Two, that staff provide additional information to council prior to proceeding. And three, that no further action be taken. Recommendation, staff recommend option one.
Thank you. I remember going through this. Counselor King, were you?
Yeah.
So we have gone through this in the last four years, and obviously, and then we thought we had everything well organized, and we didn't get very many, well, people decided to set up a food vendor station, and somehow, either it was the weather, or the- or the smoke, or the, I'm not quite sure what it was, but they didn't work that well, and some of them stopped. So I think anything that you can do to improve and get more people involved in doing this, I think is a really good, good thing. So I'm totally in favor of having a look at this again, because we certainly had a few of them around that really were good, and they, I don't know what happened. I never did. I do think what you need to include in this is like an exit policy for food vendors that do set up, and then, for some reason, decide not to continue. Is there any way that we could, like, talk to them after, find out what it is that they were experiencing that made them shut down either early or not come back the next year? So I would appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you. Am I on? Oh, I'm on.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. That's a good idea. Our experience has been, well, my experience anyways, has just been that when people phone us and inquire, we explain the process to them. They are not too keen on the process to date, so that's why we haven't been receiving a lot of people coming and locating here in the summer. We had people approved for last summer, and they chose not to proceed, so we're hoping if we streamline the process a little bit, we'll have better response.
No problem.
But the exit interview is a good idea.
Well, just talking to them after before they go, so we know. Anybody else have any questions about this? Counselor Rhodes, you've been through this a few times, do you have anything to add to this?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Actually, I was going to comment, but you kind of covered everything I wanted to say. We just seem to attract them periodically. I know we didn't have any last year at all. The ones that we've had have always been really good, lots of the residents and visitors to our community, where they always seem to comment in a very, very positive way about it. Regrettably, I think some of the businesses have not been successful for one reason or another, so that exit interview, if that's possible, is a really, really good thing. You know, it'll help us maybe do some programs, hoping, for some of the ones that are coming on board in the future.
Good, thank you. So, anything else? Well, thank you very much. We will look forward to an updated policy.
I'll make a motion on number one.
Oh, all righty, go ahead. Move by Counselor King, seconded by Counselor Bennett. Sorry, I missed that part. All in favor?
Thanks very much.
Okay.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mr. Dinwoodie. Her shoe's polished, is what I always worry about, they are. That's not a good thing. Okay, Mr. Dinwoodie, you're going to talk to us about information on future water sources and treatment options.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Yeah, so I'll give a bit of a small, brief presentation, and True Consulting will have a PowerPoint presentation for you afterwards with more detail. So the town of Assoius operates water systems within its municipal boundary. The municipal water system end with an electoral area A of the RDOS, the Water District Irrigation Systems on the west side of Assoius Lake, both north, System Eight, and south, System Nine of the municipal boundary. The municipal system provides service to the majority of residential, commercial, and industrial lands within the municipal boundaries, and is supplied by a series of six groundwater wells. The well, the water supply wells range in capacity from 18 liters or 295 U.S. gallons per minute, to 75 liters per second or 1,200 U.S. gallons per minute, and are listed below. So we have Well One, which is in Jack Shaw Gardens, Well Three, which is in Maple Drive, Well Four and Five, which are in Cottonwood Park, Well Six, which is on the Y property off of Spartan Drive, and Well Eight, which is on King Fisher at about 83rd Street. A seventh well, designated Well Number Seven, has been drilled but has not received approval from the Interior Health Authority to be used as a production well.
Can I ask where Well Two is?
Well Two has been decommissioned.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And no longer is around. It used to be in Legion Park.
Okay.
It dried up, that's why we don't have it anymore. All wells except One and Three contain elevated levels of manganese. Currently, manganese is only considered an aesthetic water quality issue, but it may be changed in the near future to a health concern, as Health Canada is presently reviewing manganese exposure in drinking water. Adding chlorine to the water causes the dissolved manganese to form a solid, which produces cloudy water. The manganese settles in the reservoirs and coats the wall of the distribution piping. 100% of Assoius water mains have a manganese coating on the inside, which gives, which gets stirred up when the system is drained or flushed. The manganese coating is likely creating an environment for bacterial growth. The Interior Health Authority, RHA, strongly recommends that the town of Assoius implement a water treatment program, which would eliminate the presence of bacteria in the water distribution system. Such a treatment program typically consists of adding chlorine to our water supply. However, the above noted elevated levels of manganese in our water supply make it necessary to remove the manganese prior to treatment with chlorine. In 2014, the town piloted a new manganese removal technology at two of the wells, which did successfully eliminate manganese from the water sample. True Consulting Limited has suggested three options for the development of a water treatment program for the town of Assoius, which they would like to present to Town Council for your information. So the options can be, are presented, will be, can be summarized as follows. Option one is if you treat Wells Six and maybe Seven on Spartan Drive, Wells One and Three, Four, Five, and Eight at a central treatment facility located in Jack Shaw Gardens. Note that this option requires a new water line under Assoius Lake, and that only costs you $12.2 million. Option two is you treat Well Six and maybe Seven on Spartan Drive, you treat Wells One and Eight in Jack Shaw Gardens, and Wells Three, Four, and Five in Kinsman Park. That one costs $15 million, we guesstimate. And option three is you convert the water supply to surface water obtained directly from Assoius Lake. If you're going to do that, you need to build a actual water treatment plant, that's somewhere around $24 million. And True will provide you more information in their presentation on where those numbers come from and what they actually mean. It should be noted that grant funding from the rural and northern communities fund could potentially pay for 90% of whichever water treatment option Town Council chooses to implement in the future. So the options before council are the Town Council received this report from the Operational Services Department and True Consulting Limited as information. After, and after further review and analysis of the attached report from True Consulting Limited, is recommended that Town Council discuss this matter further in 2019 to decide whether or not to apply for grant funding. So like I said, the information and direction requested is the Town Council simply receive this report, and then True will do their presentation.
Any questions? Yes. Go ahead, Counselor King.
About that Northern Community Fund, is that more related to the north of the province, or how do we tie in being so-so?
Anything north of the main, anything north of Vancouver is north, so we count, we count in the rural country, so that's a rural and northern communities grant funding, so we count as rural.
We do qualify?
We do qualify. And they will pay up to 90%.
If you were less than 5,000 people, you would qualify for 100%.
Oh, great.
Oh, thanks, they just needed to know that. Fifty wiped on three million bodies.
All of the rate and application to the fund, they qualify.
Quickly.
You have to get yours in now, we're in Assoius.
So, welcome, Steve Underwood, who's going to explain this. And Counselor Rhodes, are you keeping track of how much money this is all adding up to, because I think you're good at that. He likes to keep track.
Yeah, I sure am. It's, you know, it's staggering the cost of a huge one of those options. So maybe I'll just go for the most expensive one.
Just, yeah, but it's, it's not just the water things, it's sewer and all the other things, so I want you to keep a running total, please.
Well, no, this is just for the water.
I know it is, but CJ, keep track of all the money that we need.
Yeah, I have my calculator, it's burning up right now.
Thank you.
We'll try and warm it up.
Is it in the U.S.? Okay, thanks, Steve.
Yeah, I guess the purpose here is this report that we've started to write, that you've circulated. We call it Revision Zero, because this report will evolve and will form kind of a supporting document to a grant application. And the, one of the big reasons you do a report like this is you show the grant funders that we have looked at the other options. And in this case, we were always cruising toward which was Option One, like we piloted the manganese removal in 2014. Like, we've been working incrementally towards Option One, as we can afford it, but we've had some difficulties getting that pipeline under the lake at the bridge, which has caused us to have to kind of step back, look at what our other options might be, and, and work with the OIB and ourselves, and just trying to decide, you know, if we are not going to choose Option One, which seemed to be the most economical, which way are we going to go? So that's kind of where this report started. It's also helping us communicate to IHA what our plans are, because IHA is always on us about moving forward, so this document helps us do that as well. And obviously, it informs you as to sort of the fact that we're not just blinders going one way. We're going to, I guess, discuss our options now, and then make a decision together on which way we're going. So we're presenting this report, but we definitely see ourselves revising it before it's kind of a final report, I guess, that will be submitted to the grant funders. So today, I'll take you a bit of a background on your water system. We'll look at the water demands, because we're going to do an option, supply options assessment. We need to look at how much we need to supply, and for what timeframe we're looking at supplying that over. And then we'll talk quickly about your water conservation plan and where we're at there. Then we'll look at the, how much water we're going to need, and therefore, our options to supply that. And I say other recommendations, we've actually taken them completely out of the PowerPoint, they are in the report, but a lot of them we're already implementing. One of the recommendations in the report was to do a universal flushing program. We added that to the budget already in 2019, so this report was more written in 2018, and it's kind of just getting to us now. So Jim kind of went over our wells, I've put them on a map here. It's quite, it's not easy to see, but up here by Lacy Point is well Six and Seven. Well Eight is down on King Fisher. What number is that one?
One.
Well Ones in Jack Shaw Gardens, Four and Five are over here on Cottonwood, and Well Three, Maple Drive. They're, they're spread out all over town, which has worked well. And like Jim mentioned, One and Three are not contaminated with manganese, but they're part of our, our overall thing.
And Well Three also tends to produce the most water.
Yeah. Well, Well Three is run the most, because it has the best water quality. And so this is just the same math, showing you the wells with the image, trying to put a lot of maps in here, and go to the next one. So the, this is a chart that shows us how much water each well can produce. And I pointed out, Well Five, it produces twice what any other well in town can produce. And when we do this, this math, we show you your total ability to supply water, and you don't really need to worry about the units, but it's 22. That's how much you can, that's how much we could pump if all our wells were running. But when I do this analysis- But when I do this analysis for you, I use fifteen. And what I do is I say one of these has to be able to break down, and you still have to be able to supply water to your customers. And so we pick your largest, and you can see it's your, it's your real largest. So in any of this, if we're saying we're going over fifteen, yeah, our supply can go over fifteen. It can go to twenty-two, as long as everything's working. Or it could go to eighteen or nineteen if only one of these smaller ones was broken down. But if Well Five actually broke down, we would only be able to supply fifteen-point-nine-two. Further to the background, I guess, your surface, you have the System Nine lake intake and the System Eight lake intake. Those are supplying irrigation water, and per our rural area twinning program, we're converting those to be irrigation water only, and we're bringing potable water out to the rural areas. Those intakes, this one's in really shallow water. It's, it's relatively useless from a potable water perspective. And actually, Eight as well, where it currently is taking water out of the lake, is in really shallow water in the summer. It's just too warm to be considered potable water. But like, the intake at Eight is near a hole in Assoias Lake that is deep enough to consider being a surface water source. It would have to be extended into that water. Manganese. So as Jim mentioned, we have elevated manganese. It's an aesthetic issue. It's always been an issue here. We've been working towards it. IHA has sent us the draft of the legislation that is expected to come out this year that will make manganese a element, like, something we have to treat for. A maximum allowable concentration is what they're going to call it. And they propose a number of point-one-two parts per million. Our wells are point-one-three-five, so we're over, or we will be over. And that positions us well for grant funding, because the regulation changes. Now we need grant funding to meet the new regulation. So it's, it's going to be good, but there is going to be water quality advisories resulting from this that will be in the paper and stuff. Like, it's going to be a problem to comply with. IHA will, once it converts, start coming after us to comply. So this report, again, will at least say, yes, here's how we're going to reply. So it'll be a good thing to communicate with them and hopefully slow them down on issuing water quality advisories in Assoias, because it's the same water that we've always had. It's just they're changing it. Another thing that IHA was concerned about was total chloroform tests, and this, this has triggered this chlorination in our system. So part in this report, we did look at those. They were saying that there's an increasing number of, of positive results, so we, we studied it a little closer. And I think what they were worried about is that we are getting some in the rural areas where we don't claim to supply potable water all the time, but they were blending them together with our, our in-town stuff. So something we have established here is we aren't getting worse. We're not getting more positive counts. It's not like Public Works isn't keeping up with something. It, it hasn't been worse, but it's, they, it's still happened. We still get positive counts frequently enough. Like, we get, we get six to ten a year. And that is more than maybe our neighboring communities. So it's not getting worse. It's just more of the same.
And a positive count is anything over one. Chloroform count of one is not a very high health risk whatsoever, but anything over one, we, we require to report it to Interior Health, and so it counts.
So the next slide is, we, we have our wells that are different levels of concern with how close they are to the lake. And that would be concern about them being wells that are directly influenced by surface water. Well Eight is right beside the lake, so you'd think that it would, you know, you would think that it is directly influenced. But we're finding through the groundwater hydrologist analysis that, that none of them are actually directly influenced by the lake, which is a good thing. IHA has concern about the marshy area in the Y at, by Well Six and Seven. That's why they're not approving Well Seven at this time, is they want more study done on that. They call it a marshy area. And it, of course, flooded this year because of the high water and the flooding. And so did Well One flood this year, which has caused IHA more concerns about deeming that one to be under the surface water, or influence of surface water, because it flooded last year. So when your well is under the influence of surface water, it will, to be treated, it will also need UV. And so we're, we've put X's here saying that these wells will likely need not only manganese removal, they'll need chlorination and UV, because they're likely going to be considered under the influence of surface water. It is, our experience here with Well Seven is showing that it is going to be harder and harder to get new wells approved in the future. Finding the sites, number one, is, is hard enough. And then, number two, going through, you can't be within thirty meters of a sewer line. That becomes even harder to find nowadays. And then the lake or, or surface water is going to be triggering these UV treatment and stuff like that. So then, our current demand. You can see, what we, what we look at is our maximum data man, which is red, because our wells need to be able to supply that. We can store water in our reservoirs, but those, that water meets what we call peak hour. So we can be draining our reservoirs at any time in the day, but as long as during the day we're able to pump enough up there, we can supply it from our wells. The maximum data man has not been increasing, so you're, that speaks to our water conservation. Everyone here has been doing quite well. You can see, back in two thousand to two thousand and ten, our demand actually basically exceeded that number of fifteen-point-nine that I told you we could supply. And it's only been recently that we've had demand, say since 2010, that even meets our current supply capabilities. We look at demand per capita. That's more water conservation exercise. And to show you that we do have a declining water demand per capita, which is a good sign. And in our water conservation plan, we targeted eight-hundred-and-seventy liters per capita. That was our 2010 target. And you can see on the next slide that we're actually getting close to achieving that. Like, we're almost already there, and we haven't implemented water metering yet. And so per everything else we have done in the plan, the public education, it is getting us to our target. Some things that we need to think about here is are we going to be able to blow the doors off the target? Are we going to be able to keep going? Or are we going to kind of get to our target and, and plateau? And then, what does that do with population growth? Because we're going to end up with this guessing game as to what our future demand is going to be. And, and one question is, is how, can we keep this trend going down, or is this trend going to go flat at some point? The tools that we have left in our current water conservation plan are the metering, more education and public awareness, and then converting more public spaces to reclaimed effluent or alternate sources if we can. Those are, those are things that are less. There was also fixture, on the next slide, there's fixture retrofits. That's, you know, installing low-flow toilets in people's houses, like giving rebates for things like that. They're a lot less effective measures than metering. And you'll find metering will take that demand down further. It will have an effect. And we can do some staring at the water conservation plan, kind of as an update, and try and do some better predictions, if that's what we need to do for where we can get based on what other communities saw. But we will, we will see, you know, the, the old numbers, it used to be you'd get a twenty percent reduction. You're not going to get a twenty percent reduction because of all the public education you've already been doing. You've already gotten some of that reduction. So we'll, we'll see what else we can get, but we might get another ten percent of metering. And that'll really help us in keeping our, our demand costs down moving forward. So then we try and predict what will we need. So this is our, our demand now at fifteen. And so we look at our population and decide, so we, you know, we, we've charted a two percent population growth in this chart. And, and we've said that we're going to decrease by ten percent until the year 2040, our water demand. That's an aggressive, it's an aggressive conservation number, but also a pretty safe population growth number from a wat, like, I think that's also a high population growth. So these are, and it's showing that we're going to need three new wells, what we're calling Well Nine, Ten, and Eleven by the year 2060. It's kind of the timeframe that we've been using for some of this. And you can see Well Seven is basically needed now. And our capacity blips up, you know, to this number here, and Well Seven lasts quite a while with water conservation. So if, if we only brought the well we already have drilled online in this scenario, we would have water basically till 2040. But if you, if you change some of these criteria, you keep the two percent population growth, but you don't do that ten percent reduction in water use after we hit the eight-seventy, you just say, once we hit eight-seventy, that's how much everyone needs in a day, eight-hundred-and-seventy liters, trying to think about using that much water. It boggles your mind, but you can see that we need four new wells, and how much more quickly Well Seven runs out. Well Seven runs out before the year 2030 now. And, and we, and these are all the new wells, Well Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, in that same timeframe. Our, when we're looking at these cost estimates later, the problem is, is identifying where is Well Nine going to be. We don't know. We assume it's going to have manganese in it, because all most of your wells do. So you'll need another manganese treatment plant. So every time we drill a well, you're also building another treatment plant. And that is part of what gets expensive in this life cycle analysis that we'll look at later. And so then, in this graph, we, we take the population down one and a half percent, which is probably more realistic, but then we, we add on the, the more aggressive water conservation, just to show you how water conservation can really make a difference in this, in this decision that we're doing, and how important it can be if we pursue groundwater to make sure that we don't have to go up and seek out more wells. For the life cycle part further on, we, we use the middle of this. So this option has three new wells. The previous one had four new wells. We, for life cycle, we assumed three new wells by 2060. Not being able to predict what population or demand will actually do. So to meet those demands, like we've alluded to earlier, we have three options. Option One had two major groundwater treatment plants and has an initial capital cost of twelve-point-two million. It requires the pipe under the lake, and a current situation will not be possible. And our report basically says that, that we recommend ignoring Option One for now. And because of the, the thing in pursuing either Option Two or Three. Two or Three, Option Two involves three manganese treatment plants now. And Option, the third option is the conversion to surface water, which is something, is very rare for communities that are on groundwater to consider doing this converting to surface water. Groundwater is usually cheaper to treat. But it's, it's worth looking at to say that we looked at it, and frankly, after looking at it, it might be something we look at closer. So Option One, I guess we can go right to the, the map of it. It involves building a, a treatment plant in the Y for Well Six and Seven, and then building a pipeline, basically from Well Four and Five all the way to the King Fisher Treatment Plant at Jack Shaw Gardens. And the pipeline allows us to centralize the rest of our treatment to one spot. And there's a lot of efficiencies with that. But there's some pipelines that need to be built. So it is a, it is expensive that way, but it still was what we were working towards, because it was cheaper. The key piece of the pipeline that we are going to be unable, or currently unable to achieve is this crossing the lake here. We've looked at alternates trying to come around in the lake in other ways, and, and nothing seems to be economical at this, at this time to try and get through there. So our, our solution to that is to build the, is to take you to Option Two. But first, I guess, let's take, this title is titled a bit wrong. Option Two, Spartan. This just shows you where the plant is in the Y. This is Spartan Drive. Well Seven's up here. Well Six exists right here, and this is just where we would build the treatment. It kind of gives you an idea of footprint. We can go to the next one. This, this figure here in the report shows you the different pipelines that would have to be built to accommodate building the treatment plant here, and they're all included in the estimates that we're provided for you. Next slide. This is the King Fisher Treatment Plant. There's Chickadee Court, the old Public Works building. So it's, you can see where we're proposing to squeeze the, the King Fisher Way, or Water Treatment Plant in that little corner there. Both options, it'll be, they'll be slightly different sizes depending on what option we do choose. But this would be the larger of the ones that we've shown in this figure.
Is this contemplated in the design for the revamp of the lift station there right now?
Yes, the lift station is across the street.
Oh, okay.
Is that, that was one of the decisions, to move it back across the street, because the lift station was originally proposing this park two. So now we'd have a splash park, a manganese removal park, and a main sewage lift station, all in a park. So
It was too close.
Moving the road and switching it over to where the main lift station is going was part of the decision process. So the, the pros of, of Option One are it has a low capital and O and M cost. You know, a con is there's a lot of pipelines to build. And currently, it's in close proximity to a OIB cultural, area of cultural sensitivity, I guess, is the right words. And, and, and right now, it's a non-starter until we could either bridge that gap with the OIB or, or, or not. It's really, it's, they're in complete control of that one being feasible. But this option, as mentioned, with all the groundwater options, requires more wells to meet our future demand. And if we say our future demand is 2060, it's three more wells for our life cycle analysis. So Option Two, it, you know, as Jim mentioned, it has a fifteen million capital cost. That's, you know, next year if we're going to implement manganese removal. That would be it. But obviously, we need more wells moving forward, so that capital cost is higher. And in, we've added the, the Kinsman site. So we can go through, we, we basically would build a, a plant at Spartan again, a plant at King Fisher again. And now, we've shown it at Kinsman. It doesn't mean that's where it has to go. We need an east Assoias Treatment Plant. And when we do these, we get stuck on land problems, right? So I like to show you a solution that at least is land that we have control over, and, and give you the cost estimates to get the pipes to there, and the distribution upgrades to get the water then away from there. I've done the same thing with the surface water. I proposed a site, but that doesn't mean that's where it's going to go. But it helps you to produce these cost estimates. And we can, we would use the same treatment plant at, at Spartan, so you can skip that one. Kinsman's one that's, this is a smaller version of the one at Chickadee, so the King Fisher. And then the next one, just to give you a footprint, you can try and see it maybe the first slide, how much of the park we would be taking. You know, there's, there's a trailer in the trailer park next door. It's basically that width, and we would be taking a whole corner away from that park if we site this over there. An option could be to buy any city lot, really, over there and put it, and build it on that lot. We could fit it on that footprint. Difficulty is land acquisition will not be fundable under these grant programs. So anything we spend on land acquisition, we have to pay hundred percent dollars. So then Option Three, Surface Water. Twenty-five million. What I've shown here on this option, and it's, it's a, it's put, it's a feasible option. I'm not, and what I'm showing here is, is we're extending the lake intake into Assoias Lake into the deeper water. There's a two-hundred-foot hole out there. We would have to do some science to figure out the ideal depth. But we want that cooler water in the summer. We don't want that warm water. We're building a pipeline from the existing intake in this cost estimate to the airport, where we have land at least available to be able to build a facility this size. The packing house property is right there at the in, eight intake. If we could get a corner of the packing house property for this, that would work fine. If we could get a corner of the packing house property for this, that would work fine. Another property that we identified was the golf course. We could reconfigure some holes, put it there and or there is a ministry and gravel pit on the highway that we've kind of got our eye on and might be worth looking at. I'll point them out. But so it'd be pipelines to a facility and what we've estimated and then a treatment plant and then pipelines from the treatment plant all the way to the reservoirs, which are at the golf course. Schematically, what this estimate is, there's the the new lake intake. There's a pipeline from the system eight pump house all the way to the airport. We've got it footprinted so that we can see how big of a facility we're talking about. And then from the airport, we then have to pump the water across to our town reservoirs. The other sites where this facility could be are in the golf course. Here's the gravel pit that I mentioned that the ministry owns. And right now, we have it at the airport, but there's also the packing house property, which if we could work some sort of deal, we could take some land there or any land in between would would work as well if we could acquire it.
Steve, is the the airport location, that is the kind of the the optimum location, do you feel, for for that particular site or or plant?
No.
No?
It's kind of like the Kinsman. I when I when you you asked me like, well, what would surface water cost? Well, I need to like, it's fine for me to I I answered that question the day Jim asked me, 20 million. But it's this then, well, can you do a better cost estimate than just tell me 20 million? And then you have to you have to sit down, you have to look at somewhere, right? And then I have to, that's how you create the estimate. That site works fine. What you're doing is you're doing a lot of pumping here because there's a lot of elevation change to there of raw water. You're then treating it. Then you're doing hardly any pumping to get it to there because it's basically the same elevation. So your pumping energy will be the same if we picked any site kind of between those two because we're pumping twice no matter what. It's just how much energy do we put into the water to to get it up to here? This site does have access to the water system and has access to sewer. Power is there, but it probably wouldn't be big enough for what we need. So it it does work, but so could, you know, whatever hole this is, if that would work just as well. I like this gravel pit idea, and I think it's worth exploring. It's kind of halfway between, but it's a it's a site that's just not being used by anyone right now that we could repurpose and possibly acquire for a dollar because it's owned by the ministry and it'd be used for.
Steve, just another question. When you're talking about the 90% funding, is that pretty well kind of a guarantee? Because I look at it and I go, okay, we're talking 25 million, 15 million, 12 million? Are we talking 1.2, 1.4 versus 2.5? Because 2.5 is doesn't sound too bad compared to 1.2 if you're going to get your long-term solution.
The only way this works with our current water utility and our current water rate structure is for grant funding to pay for the initial capital cost of this conversion. IHA, if if we draw this out too long, will ask us to supply a timeline as to when we're going to achieve compliance. This is how it's worked with other people that are on surface water that aren't filtered. So you will be asked to come up with a timeline on when you're going to comply with the manganese regulation that's just coming in. And we could come up with a realistic timeline that might be 10 years where you start, you raise your water rates and you start saving money for 10 years to be able to then finance the manganese removal plants. But in all cases, you would say it's going to be faster if we get a grant. Your chances for a grant are really high with the change in regulation. We've we've kind of been almost waiting for this regulation to come in, and it's happens like we started this report before it came in, but we've always known it's likely to come in, or they've been talking about talking about it. But now it sounds like it will be in 2019, it will happen. And that'll be a really good case. So yeah, you can almost say, thinking it's a 10 cent dollars, only for initial capital cost, not for O and M, obviously, whatever you build, you have to operate and maintain.
Sorry, Barry had a question.
Since we're talking, I just to throw out a question here, do you do you have a sense for what is a preferred source of water for grant grant tours?
Part of our problem with the surface water is right now, we can't say that it's a preferred source because we don't even know what the water quality is at that depth that we want to target. So I couldn't tell you what a preferred source is even right now from our perspective, from a grant perspective. Filtration plants have been very popular lately because IHA has mandated that by December of 2026, that all of their surface water sources will be filtered. So that we see a lot of filtration plants for surface water sources being approved. But I wouldn't say that there's more than than on there just hasn't been a regulation that we're trying to comply with necessarily on the groundwater side. So once this new regulation comes out, there will be more manganese removal plants probably funded, but they haven't there hasn't been as many funded. We've we're building two right now, manganese removal plants that are funded under the Clean Water Fund. And you really you can, we we twisted our words saying it's likely to be regulated soon, but it's really just an aesthetic thing now. And and we did get funding for it for Burns Lake and Hundred Mile House.
Years ago, we did do, we we began a water quality study of water in the lake. Unfortunately, we did not complete that study, and so we don't have the data right now to find out just to what how what the water quality is in the Suyes Lake. So if we were to try and if we wanted to pursue the surface water option, we would then have to maybe reallocate some resources and maybe complete that study so that we would then know for sure if it's a viable option or not.
And can I ask, you you talk about using well seven, but in fact, we have we've been turned down for that. We're not, we can't use it. So are is that something that we're going to pursue to try and bring it up to code or whatever in order to use it?
Yeah, so they were concerned about the wetlands and and rejected our application. And so I are, we hired a groundwater hydrologist to make the application to IHA. And so then I go back to the groundwater hydrologist, like, your report says we can use well seven. What does IHA, where do they get the power to say we can't when you're the expert? And so they asked me for more information. So we we had sent the survey crews down to like pick up the bottom of the marsh in the lake so that they could cut some cross sections through everything. And so they are currently working on a response. IHA is like, so we are not just giving up, but we're kind of having the argument with IHA to get well seven at least approved, but with UV is where we're saying if we might end up.
Yeah, and the interior health interpretation of the legislation is quite strict. I don't know if that's necessarily that accurate, but it's very, very strict interpretation of the rules. So we're, like I said, working with a hyd- the water hydrologist to tell the well, okay, this is what we found, and these are the actual cross sections, these are the actual elevations. We're still in discussions.
Okay, thank you.
So if we, we'll just have a quick look at, see how Paul that can make you with my spot I picked in the airport. We can get to the next slide. It shows you the footprint of the facility and basically a whole like room for future expansion of the facility. But you can see, this is the Home Hardware's property, and we've taken up pretty much the rest of the property at the airport that was supposed to have hangars or whatever or a terminal building that for the Airport Society. In this sketch, it's a all water treatment plant.
Is it movable on the other side of the road to where the the hangars are where in there or is that?
We tried to squeeze it in there, and you can see the the depth, like, it just didn't quite fit. In in final analysis, we might be able to get it there. Well, if you go to the next slide, what we've we've assumed is that the water quality is going to be terrible at that depth, and that we're going to need this whole first pre-treatment stage where we try and remove something with a flocculation and stage like we're trying to clarify the water using more like typical treatment steps that you used to see in water treatment plants where you're adding flocculation chemicals, you're trying to create flux and settle out a bunch of stuff. We're assuming that we need to do all of that here. And then what this whole stage is, this is actually the filtration to meet IHA's 43210's standards. It's a membrane filtration plant. This membrane filtration plant also treats its own backwash, so it's oversized to like have, we use 99% of the water that we take out of the lake, we actually are treating. So it's it's a very safe footprint that I've estimated and an expensive footprint that I've estimated, but it's also potentially where we're going to end up. So I didn't want to like under shoot on the estimate.
I guess there was a comment, if we applied and possibly did away with that road, then it could move over to the right, save a little distance of.
Yeah, and a lot of what if you can you go back one slide? You can see there is a there is a road dedication here. Possibly if we could talk to our like, like, this is our road, really. That's the ministry's road, and maybe we can close some of the road and and use it for our purposes if if we needed a little bit more width. It's not the best spot in that, you know, there's a future taxiway down here potentially, and and, you know, having a water facility at an airport isn't necessarily a complimentary use, but it it is a nice piece of property because it it works and we own it.
Going back to the water, using the lake water, then basically if there's money to use in 2019 and apply for that grant, we can apply for that grant yet because we haven't finished this well water.
Well, we've actually missed the cutoff for applying for the grant in 2019 already. That was early in January. So what we would have to do is apply for the grant again in 2020. But so that means that this summer, if we were to reallocate some resources, we could do the testing to see if the water quality is okay and we can actually use it. So we do have time to actually do the complete the study this summer, and we'd be able to determine if the lake water is of a quality that we can actually use in the future, and then we could apply for the grant in 2020.
Is that testing quite expensive?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, it's one of those things is is that testing, because we don't have any quality testing, we're not going to get a support letter for IHA saying this is the right thing to do. They're going to just have more questions, what's the water quality like? So we want to be able to answer as many of those questions as we can to get IHA on board with writing us the best support letter ever for our application to the grant. So because this option is looking like it's more of a viable option when you especially when you look at the life cycle of this option, and if you think with your brain that these are 10 cent dollars for the for the 25 million as a but the O and M is 100% dollars, this option starts to become much more worth considering. But we do, we just don't know the water quality at the depth. So we do need to get out there this summer with an intake at the depth and run sampling programs. Ideally, we'd even have money to do a wa- a treatment plant pilot, but that's a like, that's a $100,000 study, so that's maybe not one we would do, but we would at least sample and sample and sample all summer or even through spring to get freshet, to try and get good supporting document about the water quality and then make a decision once we see it, whether or not it's likely to be long-term feasible, because it might not be. As you get deeper, the water can lose oxygen and start absorbing metals out of the soil around it, and the water could just not be nice down there. And plus, the algae blooms that we get in the lake as as the algae dies off and kind of rots at those other levels, we could be getting total organic carbons, which cause disinfection byproducts, which are cancer causing, like, we might end up with water quality we just don't want to try and deal with, and the the groundwater could look wonderful at that point. But we we do kind of need to look at that. It's probably worthwhile having a look at it this year because of this, but we should also, if we are going to look at this, start looking at sites so that we can go for a grant application and tick the box. Do you have the land? That's a really important box to tick because when you don't tick it, I think you're you start moving down the list on the on the thing because like, oh, this one's likely to go, or maybe it's only a 50/50. Why do we find a 50/50?
Now, the the good news is that there is a water project that we have already got in our budget that we could postpone if we wanted to, and we could take that money and use it for the study.
Flushing? Is that the Flushing project?
No.
So the the test orchard location next to the high school, would that be a viable allocation?
It's not as viable, but we could have a look at it. It's a little bit further away, but yeah, no, because we could come around behind, no, we could make it work. I think there would maybe be an energy problem there in that we have to go above our reservoir height to get to it, but I could evaluate it. It's definitely, it's worth looking at all of them. And if that's the best spot, that's the best spot. It would be really good to give tours to the high school students as part of.
It'd be very close.
So we list some pros and cons, I guess, two slides forward. One more, there we go. Of the pro of a central treatment plant was staggering over the life cycle analysis that we did do. Having a limited number of pumps really, really sold off the life cycle. When you when you picture a new well, the so that's a pump in the well, it has to lift to the manganese treatment plant. And then the manganese treatment plant then has another set of pumps that'll pump it into the distribution system. So and that one usually has a backup pump, so for every every one well needs three pumps. Whereas when we when we do this, our pumps are much larger, but there's there's only a limited number of them that that we need. We need the lake pumps, and then we need the treatment plant pumps, and we can we can make them frankly huge, but we don't, it's a lot less maintenance. So and this says manganese removal may not be required. We may discover manganese is in the water when we get to the deeper depths. It may be absorbing that from the soils due to, so it might be going in a circle. But soft water, that's something that the Suyes residents don't even know what it is. I come from Kamloops where we we drink river water and and I and I taste your water and frankly, I don't like it. It it's mineralized your water, like, it has a flavor. It's hard water and it and it tastes and it stains fixtures, and therefore, a lot of people have softeners. If we made this conversion, the softeners could all be removed. The flavor would be something that you'd have to get used to, but a lot of other people would say, oh, it tastes good. But it's just that it's it'll be much less mineralized. And hopefully, we can keep it cool by going into that deeper part of the lake to give you nice cool water, too, because no one likes warm water. It doesn't taste as good. Another pro, though, is the the wells are still there. We would decommission most of them to a stage, but they could always be brought back online. We wouldn't get rid of probably any of them. And so if you did have a treatment plant fire, like in some sort of emergency, I like to say struck by meteorite, like trying to dream up with the meteor, maybe a plane lands on it because we put it beside the airport, you could bring the wells online to supply water. And so we have a backup, whereas with with the the wells, again, we're always trying to not be able to lose any one of them, but if we lost two or three for something, it would become a bit a water supply option, a problem for us. The cons, we've kind of talked about, we don't know the type of water. There's lots of water mains, as you saw on the plan, right through system eight where we just laid pipes last year, two years ago. It'll be a little bit of public backlash, what, you're digging the road up again?
Dig up the other side.
Yeah. Yeah, the ministry will get a brand new road out of it.
They know our newspaper.
Yeah. One thing to also, I I pointed out is zebra mussels. Zebra mussels are going to be devastating to the lake if they come. They're going to be devastating to your surface water intakes. You're already running them, so they're going to be devastating no matter what, but they'll they'll be a big problem for O and M on this, and and you'll be fixing it no matter what. So I guess it's not necessarily a con if you convert to this because you're going to have to be out there anyway, picking the mussels off of the screens. A benefit, I guess, that's not mentioned here is system eight is old, like, it was built in 62. A lot of the piping in the system eight pumping station is nearing the end of its life. The pumps are probably in need of a good, you know, redo. The intake hasn't been maintained ever since it was so we could, as part of this, we'd be building a brand new intake that system eight irrigation would share. We would build a more zebra-proof screen where any screen that I build nowadays in any of these lakes, we do take information from the Great Lakes who have the zebra mussels and apply their technologies to our screens so that we can make them more zebra-proof, but there's no such thing as a zebra-proof screen, but we can make them easier for you to maintain in the future. So there will be some spinoff enhancements to the system eight system if we did go down this road. this road. So, here's how the costs, or the life cycle analysis graph against each other, and, and really, the, the important thing to focus on is the blue one down here, that's why we've tried to color them different, is the initial capital cost is, is lower on groundwater, but the, the long-term O and M is relatively the same, and it gets even better as you go into a longer life cycle analysis, because the, the amount of spinning parts is, is lower in the, in this option. Expansions to this option, because everything would already be sized for this future expansion, is very simple with su, surface water, everything, because it's all new, and we're predicting a, they, it'd all be built to just be expanded, whereas these expansions in the future are drilling new wells and then building, we assumed, a kilometer of pipeline from said well to the distribution system, where the distribution system would be large enough to receive that much water, and a manganese removal treatment plant. So, this basically involves three new of those wells in, in the, in the life cycle. So, we've, we've graphed them, just to show you how they, they spit out, and you can see the, the different wells that are, that are needed to be added in the timeframe, and how that, those are basically fifteen million dollars of those three wells being added. And then, this is upgrading the treatment plant that we would build, and we, we're showing two major upgrades, but the upgrades could be done much smaller, because you're just basically buying more membrane units and plugging them into the system that we've already built to just, to get more capacity, just buy another filter cartridge and plug it in, it starts with forty cartridges, when you're done, it'll have eighty. It's, it's just that, just keep plugging them in. The other thing that we didn't model here was, we have two wells that don't have manganese, so to defer upgrades, we could run our wells, two of our wells, that, that would still comply with current drinking water standards, and it would be a way of, of reducing the size of the treatment plant, or deferring upgrades to it. Strategy we could use, we could utilize wells one and three for that purpose in the future, but that's not included in this. So, the, the last two slides show the total annual investment that will be required, and this assumes that the town funds it completely, so it becomes a million-dollar annual investment if you run the life cycle analysis over forty years. And you can see that if you extend it out, because there's less spinning parts on the surface water plant, the, you know, cost per year is nominally lower. But the last slide is what really shows you the change in that the annual investment from the taxpayers' or a water user's perspective, this takes into account that grant-funded dollar is significantly lower, because this initial investment is funded more by the grant programs. And this actually starts to show numbers that are more affordable for our current user base to, to finance, compared with the alternatives, and/or, I guess, doing nothing is the other one, that's only going to last for so long.
Yes, doing nothing really doesn't become an option, because interior health is getting quite grumpy, they want us to do something. Last year, we began chlorinating the water in the wells, because, at their insistence that we do this, we thought we would actually get more feedback from the people, that there was more cloudiness in the water and stuff like that, it doesn't turn out that that happened. We did get about ten to twelve complaints, but that's about it. But people do say they noticed the taste of bleach in their water and that sort of stuff now. But interior health, they're, they're okay with what we're doing so far, but they will insist that we do something in the future.
For manganese.
Well, the, manganese is definitely coming around, it's not currently a thing, but when, when it does become a rule, then they will insist that you do something for the manganese removal. And we do have the technology to do that, it just takes time and money.
Thank you, Steve. You're really very knowledgeable about this. It's just totally overwhelming, isn't it, for any of us to, to, to think about? So, obviously, we have to do some...
Digest.
Our staff has to do some more thinking about this, and, and see what are the next, next steps to this, Mr. Reminko.
Well, I'll see more reports, and then some strategies in around, you know, evaluating the, the surface water system, I would say. I, I guess, you know, not to put the pressure on council, but the pressure is there, is grant intakes and, and making a decision relative to surface versus aquifer water in the future. What is, what is the future of the water supply for this community? Is it going to be changed substantially by, potentially, if, if the lake does prove to be a viable source? Or do we can, can continue to rely on the, you know, the, the aquifer system? So, that, that's why I think in 2019, we will probably be looking at bringing a number of different reports to council. I, I don't know what level of planning needs to be done for the grant applications, you know, the actual engineering and things like that, so, you know, the, the quicker a decision is made, the, the more we can, we can be kind of shovel-ready. We don't know also, relative to the program, are they going to do a grand, an annual intake? They said there'd be more intakes. So, it is a three-point-one-billion-dollar project over ten years, our fu, our funding grant, so it could very well be that, you know, over the next year, or maybe a year and a half, there, there will be more intakes.
Counselor King.
Thank you, Ben, mayor. Hypothetically, if this one I had for the surface water, how long does it take to build the whole thing, so it's actually working? Three, four years?
It wouldn't take, well, how long does it take to get it permitted, and then how long does it take to build it? That's, that's a serious question in today's world. We would need to modify our water license on the Suyes Lake to run it for our, we would, for, we would increase the domestic use allocation off of the Suyes Lake. That permitting process used to be, I send something in, and we just start designing, and by the, and then it just comes back, but now it involves consultation and, and referrals to a whole list of bands, which the Okanagan Nation Alliance will be part of that, and we will have to consult with them about this. And this document also helps, and the reason that we, we can say, one of the reasons we're doing this is, our preferred option was culturally not available, so this is our next option, right? And hopefully, we get good support that way, but it, it could slow you down a long time.
Would it make sense to talk to them before we go any further, or open some dialogue?
We have, again, this report would definitely be something that we would share with them to show them that, you know, we did look at our options, and that we're choosing this one, and, you know, over the top of another one that, and, yeah, they, we have been in communication with them already, especially because we've been trying to do option one, and we would continue that.
But I think part of the strategy is that option one was on the table, you know, but when we're looking at the long term, what is the best option? Certainly, option number one was, was perceived to be the best, because it was the most economical. Now, we're looking more at the long term.
Yeah, well, again, option one still will be the most economical if you, if you look at your life cycle, let's say forty years, and, and you do good water conservation, and you don't get grant funding, then option one is definitely the best. It's one of these things, if you're going to self-fund, lowering that initial capital cost and deferring capital cost is the right way to do it. I don't necessarily like making the decision this way, because it's almost not the right business case, is to no, front-load a lot of the costs into something that can be grant-funded. But that's the reality that we're in right now, is these programs are out there for grant funding, and, and the business case is different either way.
Do we know how the water is supplied to Asuys cottages? Do they, are they using surface water from the lake?
I think they have their well.
Pardon?
They have their own well.
They have their own well over there, that's what they're doing. Okay, so that's from deep down.
Aquifer, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Did you have questions?
Yeah, to the chair, Steve. The, so we can't really make a decision on this till we make a decision on you doing that water study on the lake. We can say, yeah, we like option number three, but we can't, we won't even know if option three's even available until you do...
Sure, we don't have the data right now to, for you to accurately make that, that decision, but like I said, we could certainly reallocate some funding to go do that this summer, if, if that's your wish, we could certainly do that.
Thank you. I believe what we need now is a motion to accept this report.
Accept it?
Are you moving that? Counselor Bennett, Counselor King. Thank you very much, Steve, all in favor, by the way.
CJ still there, did he run?
Okay.
You're out of the bank.
Good. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
And I believe we're at the end of our, of our meeting, so I need a motion, please, to adjourn. Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Harvey, all in favor. Thank you. Yes, we better have a break. Okay.